So I will call this meeting of the West Branch Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'm pleased to welcome everyone here. And we'll start with a roll call. So Leslie, if you'll do that for us.
Chairperson Fuller?
Here.
Mission member Bowers?
Here.
Ben Skoye? You're on mute. Did I see you? Ben Skoye?
Here.
Heck?
Here. Did you hear me?
Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Here.
And Hoffman? You're on mute?
Here.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is always a bit awkward, but we'll make it through. If it happens that somehow you can't hear us or vice versa, just let us know. Give us a thumbs down or thumbs up in this case maybe. So we have a suggested agenda for us. I think that everyone has that agenda. I appreciate approval of the agenda or if not, if anyone has any additions or changes. All those in favor of approving the agenda as we have it before us, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes from our main meeting. And I hope that everyone's had a chance to read those minutes. Are there any changes, additions, inconsistencies, mistakes in the minutes? There rarely are, but just in case there are, let's know. Not, I'll call for another voice vote on approval of those minutes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, the minutes are approved. I did want to ask one thing about those minutes. There were a variety of things raised with regard to the high school site plan. And it was suggested by Brian that he would discuss some of the ideas with the school district. Do we have any feedback on whether anything such as a bicycle rack or anything else might have been talked about with the school board?
I have not heard anything back from Brian though. I will see if I can follow up on that.
Yeah, because there were several different points about landscaping and vegetation and bicycle racks and so forth. Okay, the next item on the agenda, number 4A, is to discuss something that we've talked about a bit before, but not to any extent. And that is ordinance language as to whether we wish to regulate in some format swimming pools and hot tubs, whether we desire to suggest that the permits be required for those activities for swimming pool and hot tubs. So Leslie provided us with some information that was attached to the packet for today about swimming pools, ways in which they are regulated. But let me just open up the question generally. We seem to be having a few more swimming pools. They do present enough safety issues, but many cities have regulated them in various ways. Especially with regard to fencing around swimming pools so that little kids don't find an attractive nuisance and fall in where they shouldn't be. Are there any thoughts that any of you have about regulating swimming pool? Because there are regulations that other cities have adopted. We could pick up those. We could modify them if we wished to regulate swimming pools.
I guess I could pipe in on this.
Please do, Terry.
Coming from a lot of different communities that I work in, everyone goes ahead and regulates them a little bit different than everybody else. What you see in the packet here is towards the back is the Iowa City guidelines, which more or less says you can't have it in the front yard. If it's an above-ground pool or an in-ground pool that's more than 18 inches deep, you have to have a fence around it. You can't have them within 10 foot of a side yard, 10 foot of a rear yard. If you have an above-ground pool that's at least four foot above grade, you're not required to have a fence around it. If it's less than that, you're required to have a four-foot fence around it. And any gates into that pool area or into your backyard or wherever you're putting your pool needs to be self-closing, self-latching. In Durant, they don't allow them in a side yard. So depending on what zone you're in, if it's an eight-foot side yard requirement, you can't have them in that eight-foot side yard. And you have to be 10 foot off the rear property line. But they don't regulate putting a fence around them. They figure that's the insurance company's issue. West Liberty, you're required to have a fence around it. Pretty much the same location, you can't have them in the front yard. Same with Tipton. Hills doesn't regulate them. And I know University Heights, we regulate it pretty much the same as Iowa City. I guess, I guess we probably need to put something in the code if we feel that a fence needs to be put around it, especially in these residential districts where there's a lot of young kids running around. But then again, I mean, if it's at least four foot above grade, you know, I really don't think...
That creates a barrier.
Yeah, that creates a barrier. You can protect people from so much, but you can't protect them from anything, you know, everything. If they want to get in the pool, they're going to get in the pool. But if you have some type of regulations that's, that they need to follow regarding fencing or height of pool above grade, then I think the city would be covered.
Personally, I don't think anyone can protect from older kids.
No.
But younger ones, certainly four feet ought to be a reasonable barrier.
Correct. I would agree. I mean, and the self-closing gate, I think, you know, that's fairly easy to do. Iowa City also regulates the type of fencing where you can't have spacing. They almost designed it as a guard, you know, euphoric spacing and so forth. So someone can't, some young kid can't slip through there. So those would be...
I have a question about, about a pool that's four feet tall. Do they, do these pools require that you have egress in and out? As far as, you know, if a kid say pulled himself up and over the top of a pool, is there a requirement in the code that says you have to have a certain egress to be able to get out of that pool?
No, not that I know of. I've never seen any.
Okay. I could just see that being, you know, a concern, you know. If you don't, if a kid doesn't have a way to get out, if he does say pull himself into it, that could be a little bit troubling.
Oh, I agree. I mean, but then again, where does it stop?
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
Yeah.
And I do understand your concerns. I really do, so...
I understand what you mean. I mean, you can't protect everybody from everything. And that might just be just overreaching. But yeah, it's a scary thought if you don't have a gate otherwise keeping them out or some other sort of safety trigger. I guess that would be my only concern with the no fence ordinance or if you didn't, if you struck the fence requirement.
And the other problem too is if you had one four foot above grade and you had your ladder that goes in into the pool, I mean, would you require a fence around the pool or not?
Yeah.
Or some towns that make you put a fence up around the perimeter of the pool right on top of the thing? Yep. My issue is that if a little kid did get in there and couldn't see 48 inches deep, how you get in there to reach for him or jump in there without climbing that ladder? Yep. There's an issue there too.
Yeah.
But then, then if the city would decide to go ahead and put something in the code, where, would you put it under the accessory?
It's under, under 165.11 permitted obstructions in required yards. Swimming pools is there. Because you had suggested accessories, but I wondered if, since it's already said, it already says it can be in the required yard. But there's no setbacks or anything attached to it. And that, that was my question. What else? If that was the most appropriate place or does it need to be in multiple places?
Well, I think, I think you'd have to put it, you know, maybe change 165.07 accessory structures and maybe make it accessory, or excuse me, accessory building slash structures. Because I would consider a swimming pool an accessory structure. And then you could go ahead and maybe add, you know, A would be for accessory buildings and B would be for swimming pools. And have your regulations in there on what you want for fencing or, you know, your, your location. Just a thought.
Terry, I have a question. Did the other outlying areas you spoke of, Tipton and Durant and some of them, did they adopt verbiage of the larger cities like Iowa City? Or did they somewhat go out and pioneer on their own some of these regulations?
Um, I think, I think you can only go ahead and try to come up with so many things. I think everybody sort of steals from everybody else when it comes to the ordinance and they grab what they feel fits best into their community.
Yeah, I understand. And my only reason for that is there's an awful lot of kids walking to school and walking through backyards in a bigger city or where they go to school in close proximity to their living quarters. Whereas once you start getting rural or get a little bit, you know, further outside of a big city, the kids don't tend to walk through backyards as predominantly. But you're right. I just, I'm just asking if that's some of the consideration and where they brought the regulations in.
And yeah, I agree. I think they do steal, or excuse me, they go ahead and copy some of the stuff in bigger cities. You know, but just like Durant, you know, Durant doesn't require a fence. It doesn't make any difference how tall, you know, your, your pool is above grade.
Understand. That's why I'm kind of asking the question when you spoke with the different, you know, towns. Maybe they're trying to think a little bit of consideration in terms of being able to have a rural setting or a little bit more spacing than what you would have in this inner-city type of setup.
I don't quite understand.
I think just...
Well, just, just a bit of a comment on that. West Branch is getting a bit more dense, not a lot, but a bit more dense. And one of the desired directions in our comprehensive plan is for more infill development. So as time goes by, one can anticipate that there will be greater densification even in this city. But I understand your point. If, if housing units are widespread, then there certainly aren't as many cases of kids going through backyards and that like. Right.
I take a little bit of this too, it's just about enforcement. Like if we're, we put some policy into place, at least we have something to go to if we need to. But it's realistically going to be about if somebody puts up a pool and somebody complains otherwise, are we, you're getting queued up to go inspect it by a permit, assuming everybody gets a permit when they're putting a pool up. So I think enforcement is part of it, but it's not necessarily guaranteed. Like not everyone's going to remember to get the permit. They might put a pool up and then at least you have this code to go back to and say, well, this is what we would have required if you asked ahead of time.
And how do you justify like a zero lot line or a three-plugs or something? Like I used to live in, say I wanted, I was on the end, I wanted a pool, but you know, you have three different backyards that are technically all the same. Can they put one in or?
Probably be a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
Be a lap pool. I mean, I had a, I had a pretty big backyard. Well, you know, first of all, I think you're required to have what in those zones? A 25-foot rear yard. So that gives you, you got to be 10 foot off the rear property line. That gives you 15 feet already.
Yeah.
And usually those houses are not, or zero lot lines aren't back to the 25-foot. You know, they're pretty deep lots. I mean, that might be something you need to research before you buy the property too, if you want to put in a pool. You know, and another thing I was just thinking up too is, is like in Iowa City, I know, and University Heights, we've had some in-ground pools go in. Well, the owners came in and wondered, said they don't want to put a fence up, but they want to put one of those electronic covers over it, locking electronic covers that you practically walk on, I think. But they don't even allow those. You got to have a fence. I mean, and I'm sure if we adopt something, we're going to get questions like that.
Yes, there's been much controversy in the towns that have adopted swimming pool requirements.
No. I mean, I, you give them what the requirements are and, you know, I've had some people want to put up those fences on top of their above-ground pools, like you were talking about Brad. We've allowed them. You know, usually if you're putting in an above-ground pool, someone wants to put a, go ahead and put a deck around it. You know, if you put a deck around it, then, you know, if it's less than four foot above grade, you got to put a railing around it. You got to put a self-closing gate on the stairs. I think there's one up on Scott, Scott Drive or Scott Street right now with one. They required them to put a self-closing gate on the stairs. You know, I mean, it just isn't, it just isn't for the neighborhood kids. It's for your own kids' safety. You know, I mean...
Well, with the virus, I suspect there'll be more demand for pools. But of course, how long that's going to last, that'll have to do. And generally, this being Iowa, I don't think you have lots and lots of swimming pools. I used to live in Southern California, a whole different...
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, but with our seasons and so forth, you don't get that much use out of a swimming pool.
I talked to the contractor from, a pool contractor from up around Solon. I think it's Macintosh Pools. He told me he had 27 pools put in this year.
Okay.
It's a lot of pools.
That's generally in Johnson County? I mean...
No, all over.
All over the state, okay.
So it's something, something to think about and, you know, depending on what the, the board decides, it might be something we need to really think about. You know, you don't want someone to be putting a, well, I think it says in the ordinance already, you can't have them, you can only have them in the rear yard.
Yes.
Whether you require fencing or so forth is up to the board.
Are there the comments from members of the board?
John, can I just add a little something?
Sure.
Because I know the board talked about it this a little while ago, but it, it did come up to one of my council members' attention. And originally they were like, well, let's bring it to council. But I knew that P&amp;Z had talked about this. So I said, well, probably should let P&amp;Z work with the issue a little bit before bringing it to council. So there is some council interest to see something done. Then definitely didn't get to the point of having any particular direction, but it is, it is something that I think a citizen brought to one of our council members as an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask one other question?
Please.
Is there any current pools that have been installed that would be out of compliance? Like we're going to require someone to do additional work to adopt this ordinance? Is that like a situation that you're aware of or anything like that? We're not expecting that?
Not that I know of. I know we've had one in-ground pool go in in the new part of town, but I think they put a fence around it.
Yeah.
I think.
That one also, they said they were going to put a locking cover and a fence would come later. They did put a fence up, but there's a gap along the bottom. And I don't know if that's a temporary privacy thing or if that's actually it. There was one I mentioned to you the other day about near my house. I thought they were putting in a below-ground pool because there was some excavation that was happening. But they ended up putting an above-ground, a large above-ground. I think they were making the flat spot. Now, that one did not pull a permit. But when that one, the both, the in-ground one came to us last year, we don't technically have a permit. We had to pull out the building permit. So it's hit and miss. Some people just do it on their own. Some people come in and say, do I need a permit? And I need to tell them, yes, go ahead and give us one because we'll want to know. Or you can deck around it. So on and so forth. But the majority of the pools, I would say, are probably above-ground, three to four feet tall and no fencing unless they fenced in their yard because they have a pet. They're not fencing out of the pool.
And here's a, or here's, here's a possibility too. Like my place, if I were to build a pool, not that I want to, but I could build it in the side of my hill and it could be four foot at one point and then level with grade at another. So are you technically then four foot above grade and not needing a fence at that point? Or do you, you know, it's kind of half one and the other? So, and there's plenty of Hill and West Branch that people could be building into and have a zero-access pool. That's where I almost feel a fence is almost a must. Because that's the only thing, that's the really only safety barrier that's permanent and always in action, you know?
Right. And if any portion of a pool were less than four feet tall, then you'd think that you'd need the, you'd need the fencing. I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let, let me suggest something and see how this works out. We do need to figure out where the placement of any ordinance would be. And Terry suggested making 165.07 could be amended and added to in order to have an ordinance. The discussion has suggested that most of the ordinances are reasonably similar and that going with one that is already in place in the West Liberty or Iowa City or University Heights or some such place would certainly be the easiest way to go. Not only that, but there is some precedent for having such an ordinance in surrounding communities. Seems to me that if you're going to have an ordinance, you, as Ryan was saying, you really have to enforce it. And so there needs to be a permitting process so that you can identify the pools and so you can figure out which ones are going to need to be looked at and pass an inspection of, in terms of the fencing. So I would think that what we might want to have done for us is to utilize the existing ordinances, find a place in our system of ordinances to place it at most likely 165.07. And then come back to us in our September meeting with a pool ordinance that we can then vote up or down and send on to the, onto the council. Does that seem like a reasonable way to proceed? I think we do want to try and promote safety. We can certainly imagine unsafe circumstances with kids getting into pools and drowning themselves or injuring themselves or something similar and want to do our best to keep that from happening. Comments?
I agree with that motion.
We have a vote?
We did have a motion that picks up on the points that I was making. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, let's have some more discussion. And Terry, you were going to suggest...
A question I had, I have would, when, and I'm just throwing this out there, when would you require a pool to, when would a building permit be required to install a pool? Are we talking 18 inches depth or 12 inches in depth? If someone's putting a little kiddie pool out in their backyard, that's...
I'm quite sure we don't want to regulate that.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
No.
I'm talking, you know, for depth. I mean, anything over 18 inches?
Like a pool from Menards or Costco or something like that? I mean, is there a cost there that you require? I guess technically them can be taken down as fast as they want to.
True. Well, as I was reading these ordinances, it was, I thought the 18-inch amount was seen as, as the desired one. It's unfortunately enough to drown in. Can't get too cool in it, but...
Air tubes, pools that they're, you know, they can get them however big, but they just blow up and then they, you take the air out and they, they're done.
You're done, yeah.
Where you...
Will you draw the line?
Yeah.
Is there a dollar amount or does it have to be?
Portable or stationary or something? And then you'd almost have to define what portable is and what stationary is.
Is it permanent versus...
Versus temporary.
Seasonal, you know, like I said, because that's the same question that has come up is, you know, 18 inches. You know, if you have to go now spend $3,000 to fence in your yard to put up an 18-inch swimming pool.
Yeah.
You know? That's why I think what people are going to really...
Which technically isn't going to cause any harm. So what are you trying to accomplish, you know?
Can you still hear us?
That's why I thought I'd throw that out there. I mean, I know, I know in the building code or in their international residential code, if I remember correctly, it says water holding tanks over 5,000 gallons require a permit. So...
And you go dollar value because you can buy a big, pretty big pool for 500 bucks?
Yeah. If you can buy one now. Yeah, you know, I mean, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
I would imagine the intention is for more permanent installation. And that's certainly...
Well...
Yes? Snowy?
It just sort of seems that since safety is the issue, I don't know whether the issue of permanency alone would be dispositive. Because I guess you'd have to define what permanency means. So if you've got some above-ground pools that technically would pose a hazard, but could be relatively easily to remove, they wouldn't be deemed permanent, I don't think. So is that something that needs more clarification?
Is there any clarification within the ordinance that have been researched for us?
I don't think so.
Maybe that's why it's a depth, it's bound to law from this because it's easy to get temporary pools that are put up and taken down within a week or two that are less than 18 inches deep. And if you get over 18 inches deep, but it's temporary, those people probably aren't even asking for a permit because they don't think they need it. So they're not even getting, we're not inspecting those because they're not pulling a permit.
Those people are just coming in and asking for a landscape leader to get a, get some money back on your sewer bill.
I didn't see anything that specified what's permanent and what's not permanent.
I mean, you, you can go ahead and stick with the, what it says in the international residential code, 5,000 gallons, okay? If it's over 5,000 gallons, you're required to get an actual building permit for it. But if you look at the actual swimming pool standards in a couple of these ordinances, it says, you know, you're dealing with two different things here. You're dealing with whether you need a permit for it and you're dealing with whether or not a fence is required. So in this fence requirement, and this, this one here I'm looking at, it says swimming pools with a depth of 18 inches or more and the edge is less than four feet above grade must be enclosed by a fence, completely by a fence. So, I mean, you're dealing with two, two different issues. You're dealing with, well, do we require a permit for a pool? Yeah, I mean...
If you don't require a permit, then you aren't going to have the opportunity to tell people what the requirements are. If you don't require a permit, then you aren't going to have the opportunity to tell people what the requirements are. And so it seems to me that you really need both. Besides, if you don't require a permit, you don't really have an inventory of the places in town that do have pools.
Can I ask this question? Since I get a lot of people that have whole fence permits, I mean, we, probably fifty a year. I mean, this whole town's gonna have fences before too long. So what if they already have a fence? Do they need a permit to put in a pool if they've already got a fence? Is that a question that you would be asking?
Well, the standards seem to be a four-foot fence in, in terms of.
Most of them would be a four-foot fence. Four to six. Chain link or otherwise.
I guess the question of a self, uh. Closing gate would not be an issue in something like that, would it?
No, but they, if, if you did put a pool in, you could easily put in a self-closing gate.
That way you wouldn't need a self-closing to get if they had a fence. There. They were, they were, they were to have one.
You'd probably have some kind of gate, wouldn't you?
Well, yeah, you'd have a gate on the fence, but technically at that point, they don't either.
If they don't have a pool or if they have a pool.
Well, if they had, if they put a pool in, they would already have a self-closing gate.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily. Some just have that little, you know, use thing that just kind of, it doesn't close, it just. Keeps it, keeps it, keeps the gate from swinging.
Then you just put a spring on it.
Yeah, they'd have to replace that for, that would be the requirement.
But, but, but I really think that you'd almost have to, to base it on maybe on capacity of water. To regulate if you need a permit to actually have a pool. We know you can't have one in the front yard. And it has to have certain regulations for location in the side and the rear. I mean, if, if someone goes and puts up a pool and it's. Forty-five hundred gallons. You don't need a permit for it, but you still have the regulations in the code that says where you can go ahead and put a pool. You might not need to get a permit, but you still need to go ahead and follow the rules.
Does anyone know how many gallons a pool has? I mean.
I think a twenty-eight footer, four foot deep is roughly around 5,000 gallons.
Yeah. Yeah, people who come and get landscape leaders, they, they do it and they usually use between three to 5,000 gallons. There's some people that use like only a thousand gallons, but the ones who really want the credit are the ones that are using between three and 5,000. And then they keep it because they refill it from time to time because I'm sure the water gets icky and then they, you know, drains them out and they refill it.
Okay, any more discussion on the desirability of having a proposed ordinance for us to act upon at our next meeting? Wesley, I assume that you have reasonable language for that proposal.
Terry and I will work to come up with something that's appropriate based on all comments.
Okay, well, let's, let's have a, we'll call them. All those in favor of the proposal?
I didn't catch you did the motion.
Ben Scott.
All right, Ben Scott.
Yes.
Uh, Peck.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bowers? Yes. Fuller?
Yes. Okay, well, let's move on into the next item. And, uh. That is for corner lots, and I think that what we need to do is to. Have a discussion of this, starting with Terry, as to why we need to, uh, deal with corner lots in a different way.
This, this ordinance on corner lots is more or less to determine. Based on. The, the narrowest frontage or the, uh. widest frontage to determine the rear yard setback. Um, as, as it states on the paper, it says, uh, you know, lots not more than two to three. Uh, the narrowest frontage shall be considered the front yard to determine the actual rear yard setback. Um, and then on corner lots that are greater than two to three. Um, you can use either lot frontage to determine your rear yard setback. And what this, this does is a, a lot of, uh. Lots in town are, are long and narrow. And they're corner lots and sometimes. I guess developers, uh, use the wrong rear yard technically. You know, to go ahead and place their, their house. I mean, we, we all looked at this, what, probably six months ago? And we thought we did everything right. And what we're trying to do now is just to go ahead and send it to council, I think. For them to set a public hearing to go ahead and, uh. More or less approve this. Sort of a definition of how you determine your required, what your required front yard is. Which will go ahead and determine what your required rear yard is.
Leslie?
And I did clarify with the city attorney that any change to the zoning code required P and Z to have a public hearing. So this agenda item is for us to have our public hearing at our next meeting. And then it will go from there to P, uh, to the city council. So this is just a formality. Uh, we, I presented this a few, a couple of meetings back. I just didn't get it in time to have a public hearing of this. We have publishing requirements and that kind of thing.
A, a, a good example of this is we've had properties that come in that had a. A long and narrow lot and they wanted to go ahead and put an addition on their house. And they wanted to put it on the narrow side, which is supposed to be their, their, they thought was their rear yard. Where technically it's a side yard. Your rear yard's, uh, on the rear of the longest part. If you understand what I mean.
Is there any, uh, need, Terry, to, to talk with developers as they're. Producing their developments to make sure that they have, uh, better dimensions than the lots? Probably not.
Probably, you're right, probably not, because they're gonna maximize the number of lots they can get on there no matter what.
Yeah.
That's the one more lot they can, you know, sell with nothing merit of that, but as long as they meet code.
Right. I think it seems we need to get everybody back here.
I hope by September we can come back normal. Nick is working remotely, so. Keep it all running. I don't think they can hear us when that's.
I don't think so either. They can't see us, we can't see them.
As soon as I say Nick. I'm gonna creep his screen just close asleep. Hello, are you all back?
Here.
Anyone?
Yeah, I've never lost you.
Okay. Sorry, we lost you. We didn't know what happened.
All right, well, then I think that what I would propose is that we have a. Public hearing at our next meeting on the 29th of September. And that we vote on having that public hearing, uh, with, by voice vote. All those in favor of setting a public hearing on the corner lot issue, uh, on the 29th? Aye?
Aye.
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 As posed. Okay, we can go on then to our old business and, uh. There is another item that Terry is going to have to explain to us a little bit more about, um. I two area regulations, district requirements. So what, uh. What I did say is that in part C, uh, there's no reference source. Brett?
I'll just remind you, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago as well. Um, and it was determined, we didn't actually come up with a decision. Um, it's in regard to some property over on the College Street Bridge and that's what brought it up. Um, a property owner, we were doing the College Street Bridge, has owned some grain bins. And his question was if his grain bins were to be blown away by a tornado, could he rebuild them there? And when looking through the code, our city engineer noticed that there's no area regulations. So there's no requirements on what the side yard, rear yard, front yard is. So the discussion was brought up that we need to address it because our code is missing some of that. So this is just to remind everybody to determine what that is, that, that conversation evolved at that meeting to determining. What other zoning, what are the properties were around there and what they were zoned and whether that zoning was even appropriate for that area. That reminds anybody, that's.
I appreciate the reminder.
That's why we're talking about it again. We just didn't want to forget it. We, it's another code, um, update that we need to be looking at to address.
And the other thing is in the I one districts, uh, under, uh, number two area regulations. It talks about yard requirements. And the I two district, uh, forty-foot front yard is in the I one district. You know, it needs to be moved over into the I two district if we're gonna require. A forty-foot front yard.
So what's the desirability of a forty-foot front yard? Those are twenty-five foot.
Probably because you're in a more heavily, uh, heavy vehicle district, I would assume, uh, turning. You know, vehicle storage.
Vehicles that are utilized will probably be bigger.
You know, I mean, if, if you sort of look at the, uh, I two district requirements. Uh, it, you know, use is allowed by special exception by the Board of Adjustment, which is your manufacturing. Fabricating and processing, uh, which has not been listed, uh, provided. Uh, but then it talks about non-industrial uses. Prohibited non-industrial, yeah, I mean, so the only thing that would be allowed in an I two zone, it looks like to me is, is something that's allowed by a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. You know, and like I said, this is more your, your heavy industrial zones. And why, like you said, John, forty feet, I, you know, that's, that's a good question.
You know, you look at zoning ordinances and there's so many of them that, uh, go back to the nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties. And the rationale for them is, is, uh, kind of lost in history.
Yeah. You're exactly right.
Well, and the question of replacing bins. Given a tornado or some such, just thing falling down. Anyone have any, any thoughts about that? Yes?
I would just say, it doesn't seem to me like we want to prevent existing residents from being able to rebuild and reuse their lots.
Company.
Yeah. I don't know why, if this. You know, I would hope that if the. Yard requirement that we come up with, which is gonna be some arbitrary number based on whatever other codes have. Uh, doesn't apply to, uh. Some resident that has a similar situation to what was described, there'd be an exception made so that the, the existing use could be returned. I don't know why that wouldn't be common sense and.
Wouldn't that be sort of based off of the non-conforming? Section?
If it was existing non-conforming use and they just rebuilt it or something?
I mean, if you're, I think, well, my code looks up in the other room, but if you, if it's, you know, damaged by active. Tornado, you know, whatever, then to a certain percentage, then they can go ahead and build it back. But if, if it's over the sixty-five percent or set wherever it is, seventy percent of the, I think it's the assessed value, then they, they can't build it back. They can only go ahead and build it back. Or they can only go ahead and build back something that would be allowed in the zone, which would mean then they'd have to go back and. Get a special exception to do it.
Well, and I think. Last branch, I would hope the members of the.
Any word of adjustment?
Make that exception for someone in that circumstance.
Yeah.
Here to try and prevent people from using their property.
What about? Somebody who has an existing business and they're, they don't meet the requirements for the setbacks because the building. They want to tear it down and rebuild something new, is that, that allowable or?
I, I think it'd be allowable by the special exception and it sounds like to me that the board could go ahead and. Through the Board of Adjustment, could probably go ahead and tell you what your side yards, front yards, and rear yards need to be. You know?
So like if there's, there, say the building's right up against the street and it's all, they, it's at a grain site, it was an old closet. That farmer wants to tear the closet down, put a new machine shed there for his equipment or, or something like that. Will he be able to do that?
Probably only if he goes ahead and gets, you know, you know, I mean, yeah, it's all, all depends.
He has to come in and make a special.
Yeah, that's, that's why I would say that, that would be, uh, enforced. Unless it was, you know, hit by a tornado and he can go ahead and rebuild it right back on the same footprint, you know, same location. Uh, otherwise, he might have to come back and say, uh, you know, if he decides just to tear it down. Hey, I'd like to put up this, uh, you know, grain bin here, but I only want to be three foot off the property line, you know?
I would think the best advice would be to talk with the zoning Board of Adjustment before he does anything.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I don't know how else you would enforce that since there are no. Regulations on setbacks. I mean, usually when you have zoning districts, if, if there's no setbacks required, they'll, they'll go ahead and say, front yard, none. You know, side yard, none, but within, if it's a, but it's a residential, you have to be thirty feet or something. Like the I two, uh, or excuse me, the I one says that, yeah. You know, because in, in smaller communities, you know, you have some industrial zones that are next to residential zones. Uh, and that's just the way it is. So you want to make sure you can go ahead and, and, and buffer that industrial use next to a residential zone.
Or seek to make changes like with the cement plant.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a fine solution. Things work out there. We haven't heard recently. Redmond can update us on that later on. Um, so what, what you're suggesting, I think then is that for the I one district, you need to have setback requirements.
Actually, I two.
Or I two.
The I two.
I'm sorry.
I mean, and, and, you know, you, you can transfer over the forty foot that's in. That's in the I one, that's supposed to be in the I two anyway, since that's what everybody feels it should be. You know, and you could, you could do the same with the, the side yard and the rear yard and, and put. You know, it needs to be twenty-five feet, you know, but. You know, I would assume that the uses in an I one and an I two zone are pretty similar. And I don't know if you need to go ahead and. And, uh, make them any more restrictive. You know, the restrictiveness is when you, when you're abutting a residential district.
We just adopt the.
The I one.
Can you guys hear us?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay, good. The, uh. Maybe we could just adopt the area regulations from the I one district.
For the I two.
Permitted uses. Nothing. Say, area regulations to be. What does it say? Any area regulation. In I one district, we could add dimensions to start from, from there. So through the Board of Adjustment, if you want to. Go outside that.
Don't say the bound on that.
With something that's existing. Or being rebuilt, and I'm sure that. Rebuilding, I think zoning Board of Adjustment make exceptions for cases. I think I, I can't remember the criteria that we've always heard from them as long as there's a. There's a justification for it and they're supposed to.
Oh, yeah, I mean. The permitted uses in an I two zone are everything in an I one zone. I mean. And something I think seems unusual to me, you know, enforcing a lot of, uh, different codes. Is in the I two district, it tells you, okay, you, these are the permitted uses and that's everything in an I two zone. And then you go down to number three and it tells you everything you can't do. Instead of everything you can do. And, and that's just a little, a little strange to me.
So what I'm hearing Ryan say is that we, uh, provide the same setback requirements for the I two zone as currently required in the I one zone.
Does that mean we, we go ahead and get rid of the forty feet then, right? Is that what you're? Does that mean we, we go ahead and get rid of the forty feet then, right? Is that what you're thinking?
I was just gonna suggest, it seems like you could add a number to this, chapter one sixty-five dot thirty-four, maybe number five. And it says, area regulations. And then the language of it reads something similar to one in this section, which is, you know, permitted uses, they're essentially saying, I one permitted uses. We could just say, I one area regulations are being used. And then they go through the zoning board adjustment for any changes. And then specifically, I one specifically has the forty foot requirement in I two, which is there, and I don't feel strongly about that either way. So it'd just be covered that way without having to rewrite a whole paragraph.
Any comments on what Ryan is suggesting? There is something that can be easily written in?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then let's let's make that a proposal. You want to restate? Well, I, I think so, but maybe we need a restatement, so we have a motion.
Okay, I move to amend the page eight twenty-three of chapter one sixty-five or whatever, to add a section to the I two district requirement for area regulations to match the I one district.
Right?
Well, just, you can stay in there because it's gonna match the, apply when you.
Forty foot, stay. I'd like to second that motion. Okay, Brad will second the motion. And let's, let's have a voice vote on this particular one. All in favor of the motion to make the amendment to the I two regulations? Aye?
Aye.
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 Disposed? Okay, that passes. Last item here is the fringe area agreement, an update on what's going on with fringe area agreements. One of the things that our conferency plan did was to require paying more attention to fringe area agreements with Johnson County, with Cedar County. So what's going on in this topic?
I don't have an update. I had sent a message to Kevin Olson last week, and I did not know he was on vacation, so he didn't have any information for me at the time. Maybe at the next meeting I can.
Suitable.
Well, I was, I could, I could say a little bit about, about it. So it, it's, it's kind of got tangled up in some, some other longer term planning issues, particularly around Johnson Cedar County Road. As you probably know, the way that is situated, half of the road is in Cedar County, the other half of, of the road is in Johnson County. And our jurisdiction actually runs right down the middle of the road. So as we, and we're going to probably have a workshop on how to, or strategize on financing that road, which is going to have much more demand placed on it once the developments fill out. So the top clock is kind of ticking on that. Part of the thought is that we're probably going to also have to come up with an annexation policy plan strategy. And that's also going to require some, some negotiation with Johnson County. So i- in a way, those things kind of have to play out first before we go too far with a, a French agreement, because there could be some unique things that we are, where we may need to do, particularly with that road. But then there's also some initial discussions about future development on the other side of, of, of Johnson County, Cedar Johnson County Road. So the annexation may be more than just getting that road and, and right away, it may also include some more of that farmland on the other side of, of the road. That'd be the, the west side of, of the road. So, so there's, there's a lot of other issues going on that kind of have to play out a little bit more before, before the agreement really makes sense to move forward with.
Okay, well, thanks for the update, and, and please do keep us updated on this. Seems like a very important area of concern.
Yeah.
Well, we got you, Redmond. I had asked if there's anything going on with the PUD with the former crow plant area or the other PUD?
Sure. From what I can talk about, because there's still a lot of flex, actually, we just had a meeting before your meeting with a potential developer, so there is there, there is some negotiations going on with a reputable developer. The sticky point has been over the commercial sections of, of, we would like to have had a mixed use, obviously, with a decent amount of commercial, which has been back and forth on COVID-19 has not helped. As far as making the developer comfortable with, for pursuing new, new commercial at this time. We also have the Miller property, which is the corner building, as, as a challenge. And the grain bins also is a challenge. So there's still some pieces in flux. But we're, we've been talking about a sales price for the land, what a TIF, what a TIF percentage would be. And, and then those other challenging properties that would have to be involved in overall development. Access to the site, stormwater retention to the site, all those kind of things are, are all pieces that are are still kind of in flux. But there is genuine interest, and everybody seems to want to continue with pursuing some, some plan that's gonna work for everybody.
Well, that's a pleasing report. We certainly are looking for mixed use development in both of those PUDs. And good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, that takes us to item number six, and are there any reports from city staff?
All this update on one, Lathan Ridge, the developers are heavily moving dirt. I don't know if anyone has noticed, a lot of the dirt that they're excavating from the site is going over to the high school. And there apparently appears to be some planning for some sales of lots later this fall, according to Facebook, but I haven't actually heard from the developers. But just in case you want to go for a drive, you might want to drive by, that area's looking much different. And then the last thing I have is I did get an email, and I believe it went to Redmond and also the mayor regarding the BW grants. And the city of West Branch did not win a portion of that grant. An email came out, I think I put it in the packet possibly.
You did, yes, I read it.
And you can go to the i.gov settlement site and get more information. Pass that along.
There certainly is more information on that site. It's interesting to see the other applicants, and interesting to see that, I think they had, what, five different grants that were provided? Fairly large ones too, as a matter of fact, I was looking at things. So with that item, what I'd like to actually do is propose a two-part motion. And that motion would be to request the city to reapply for the 2021 BW program. Much of the work has already been done, so it should not be a difficult application. And secondly, to ask the Iowa DOT for feedback or critique of our application. I'd be interested in seeing which of the criteria we perhaps did not meet fully enough to receive a grant. And then that, of course, would inform us in putting in another grant request. So I would like to make that, that motion in two parts. One, that we ask the city to reapply. And second, that we request feedback from the Iowa DOT critiquing our proposal. And if there is a second?
A second, thank you.
Very good. Ryan, seconds? I think a voice vote on this would be just fine. Also, all those in favor of a motion? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, passes with some opposition.
I, I think he was. Yeah.
Who's it? It delayed. Four, four of Zoom. I don't know if anyone has any additional comments or thoughts they'd like to make before I close the meeting. And the next one we'll have, unless there's something exciting that comes up that Leslie wants to tell us about. Next one is gonna be at the end of September.
Oh, I did have a question.
Yes.
I, I guess I was thinking that there might be more coming from Cedar Edge's final plat. Is that still not ready, or is there any kind of timeline on when that might be coming into us?
Well, so Cedar's Edge, there's been a, there's been some discussions in regard to where Serenity Lane ends. And there's an easement across the southwest corner of the property. Redmond did talk to Gary Sexton today, and we're just gotta work out the details of when that last piece is gonna be poured, because that was all part of the preliminary plat, was that for the Cedars, for Serenity Circle to go all the way to Cedar's Edge. And the final plat did not include that piece. So we wouldn't typically approve the final plat without all their improvements in place. So we're working through those details. That would be, that possibly would be a special meeting if something changes in the meantime. But we have to, like I said, we're, we've been trying to piece it all together in the last couple of weeks.
Well, I think we're all open to holding special meetings as needed, wish things along, so just keep us informed. Okay, I'd appreciate then a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded by Grant. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, oh, no opposition.
Okay, thank you all very much.